I call the December 12th meeting of the Portsmouth City Council to order. And our invocation tonight will be by Pastor Terry Taylor, pastor of the Port Doffic Baptist Church. And I'll ask my colleagues on council to stand. And then, following the invocation, will be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilman Bill Moody. Thank you, sir.
Let's pray together. Gracious Father, we thank you for this time to share together for this season of giving that reflects the giving of your great love to us. We pray that you would be with this council as they go about their business and help them to have wisdom that comes from you. Guide them as they seek to minister to the needs of our city and the community and the residents of this city. Help them to have wisdom that comes from you and guidance as you lead them daily. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
.........................................................
Thank you. I'll ask my colleagues to indicate their presence tonight by hitting the yes button. And this will be a roll call. And Madam Clerk, we have six present and one absent.
Yes, sir.
The next consideration of the approval of minutes, three sets of minutes. We have the minutes of a call meeting of November 27, 2017, the minutes of a call meeting of November 28, 2017, and we have the minutes of a regular meeting of November 28, 2017. Sir, a motion to approve. Sue Moot?
Second.
We have a motion to approve the minutes, all three sets. Any discussion? It's been duly seconded. All in favor, please vote yes. Opposed, no. Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
At this point, I'm going to ask our colleague, Vice Mayor Paige Cherry, who was elected to the position of City Treasurer in the general election last month, to join me in the front, please. This is both an honor, but it's not really a pleasure because you're leaving City Council effective January 1. And it's been my honor to serve with you as a member of council. We have a token of our appreciation for Paige. And because of his great service, not only to the city of Portsmouth, but to our country, I thought it would be appropriate for me to summarize Paige Cherry. Vice Mayor Paige Cherry is a native of Windsor, North Carolina, which is in Bertie County. And he attended Bertie County Public Schools where he excelled in both academics and athletics. And even there, at the early age as a teenager, he proved his leadership skills by becoming the senior class president. He has a Master's of Public Administration, a master's degree from Troy University, and he has a Bachelor of Arts in Business Administration with a concentration in Housing Management from Winston-Salem State University. He served our country for nearly nine years as a field artillery officer in the United States Army. And in the Gulf War, Operation Desert Storm, he was the commanding officer of the service battery of the Fourth Battalion, Third Field Artillery. And because of his action and leadership and what he did, he received the Bronze Star Medal. And then, after that, Paige began his civilian career in 1993, working for the Department of Defense at Fort Monroe, which is an Army post. And there, working for the Department of Defense and the Department of the Army, he did projects that put him in contact and in the presence of the Secretary of Defense, the Chairman of the Joint Chief of Staff, and other senior Defense Department leaders. After his work at Fort Monroe, still with the Department of Defense, he was at the Portsmouth Naval Hospital where he did modeling for Navy medicine. And his current position, he is a Director with the Coast Guard of one of its important divisions, where he is responsible for the oversight of some 42 Coast Guard clinics, medical clinics. And you would think that with all that, he doesn't have time to give back to the community. Well, let me tell you what he does. And in addition to that, he's a trustee on the Board of Zion Baptist Church. And in addition to that, he serves on the church's Finance Committee. He is the Grand Master of the Prince Hall Grand Lodge of Virginia, which means that he is the head Masonic or the head Mason for the entire state of Virginia. And that's a job that's required him to travel from one end of '58 to the other, from one end of '64 to the other, and from one end of '95 to the other in the state of Virginia. He's a member of the Portsmouth Democratic Committee. He's on the Board of Directors for the Portsmouth Quanus Club. He's a member of the Emly Spong Preschool PTA. He's a member of the Hodges Manor Elementary School PTA. And he's a life member of the NAACP. And that's just the boards that he does serve on that reflect his contribution of his personal time to our community. In addition to that, he has previously served in his non-elected role as a member of the Planning Commission for the city of Portsmouth. And he was the Chairman of the Planning Commission. He was the Vice Chair of the Municipal Finance Commission for the city. He served on the Southeastern Virginia Community Foundation Board. He served on the Corporate Board for Boys and Girls Clubs of Southeast Virginia. He served on the Craney Allen Study Commission. He served on the Housing Board of Adjustment and Appeals, pardon me, and he's the founder and past President of the Willow Breeze Community Civic League. Now, he is also currently, in addition to being one of our colleagues on council, he serves as one of our liaisons to the EDA and to the Planning Commission. Excuse me. I'm getting choked up on this. He is the Chair of Council's Personnel Committee. He's an alternate member of the Hampton Roads Transportation Organization, which is the organization that's doing all the planning for all these highway improvements that you see throughout our region. He's a member of the National League of Cities and a member of the Virginia Municipal League. And I sure hope that you'll continue to hold those positions and those memberships when you become City Treasurer.
Y'all continue to pray for him.
Okay, we can do that. But most importantly, and he will tell you this with no hesitation at all, that he has his family first. It becomes before his civic life, and it becomes first before his community life. And his wife is here. Yvette, would you join us, please? He's married to the former Yvette A. Watkins. And they have a daughter, Felicia, who is a 2014 honor graduate of North Carolina A&amp;T State University. I present to you a couple that knows how to give, give the most scarce resource that we all have, and that is our time. And thank you for your service to our community. Thank you for your service to our state. And one of the things I failed to mention because it wasn't there, he's also been appointed by our Governor to the State Board of Veterans Affairs. So he has a heart for our veterans. And Paige, we have a token of our appreciation, which is a watch that is inscribed on the back with your years of service here on City Council. And we greatly appreciate that. And we wish you all the best in your new position as Treasurer of our great city. And will you join me in showing your gratitude and our gratitude to Paige?
And thank everyone for being here. You know, I'm not from Portsmouth, but I got here as fast as I could. But I'm in Portsmouth because I chose to be. We could have chose to live anywhere we wanted to, but we loved Portsmouth from the day, from my days as a youngster, coming up here to visit and going to the beach here and going to the malls here, because my little hometown, we didn't have any of those kinds of things to shop in. So we had to come up here. But I want to thank you, Mayor, and to my colleagues on council. I have enjoyed serving with each and every one of you. I've learned something from y'all. And also, some of the council members who are no longer serving, namely Marlene Randall, the late Mayor Jim Hawley, and the late Charles Whitehurst, who's footsteps I'm still following in as I go on to be Treasurer. I learned so much from all of you. And I want to thank, but most of all, I want to thank the citizens of Portsmouth for giving me the opportunity to serve and to be on your City Council for the last seven and a half years. It's been a singular honor for me. And the Treasury position is another opportunity to serve. And I want to just thank you for the confidence and faith you were proposing me to do that job. And I promise you, as I always have, my wife will tell you, I get up every day thinking about how to make the city of Portsmouth the better place to be. And I continue to do that in the Treasury's office. I see a lot of friends, large brothers and relatives out here. Thank you all for being here tonight. I've had a great support staff, Mayor, throughout this whole process, because you don't do this alone. There's no one as successful by themselves. And I want to thank everyone who's contributed, because I've learned something from each and every person who's come across my path. My mother used to tell, you can learn something from everyone, even if it's the work not to do. So I'm always listening and trying to learn something from everyone. And so again, Mayor, thank you. Thank you to my colleagues, and I wish the city council the best. And I'm not going anywhere. I'm going to be just downstairs. So I will be popping up from time to time, probably out of force of habit. I see my older sister just came in. Hey, Pam just came in. That's my older sister.
Anybody that's a member of Paige Cherry's family, please come forward.
My baby sister's here.
And if I may, I want to thank the family, but especially Yvette, for sharing Paige with us. Because we took him away from you and took time away from what he could be spending with you. And thank you.
These are my sisters, Pamzy and Pamela. We all, our names begin with Ps, all five of us. They were in Portsmouth before I got here. They came a few years before me. And so this was close to our parents, who were 80 miles away, allowed us to be around for their latter years. Pam is actually a 38, 39-year veteran of the Portsmouth Public School System. And if y'all went to the old Lowe's that used to be on Western Branch, you saw Pamzy. She was there for a lot of years, working there. But we've all served and given a lot back to Portsmouth, because that's what our mother taught and our father taught us to do. And so I'm just glad to call Portsmouth home. And thank you, thank you, thank you so much for the opportunities you provided us. We are from one of the North Carolinas, you said, Bertie County. It's the largest county in the state of North Carolina land-wise. It's also the poorest county in the state of North Carolina. And we were amongst the poorest of the poor, as I tell everybody, which is P-O-P. We couldn't afford the whole word. But Portsmouth allowed us the opportunity to thrive and be somewhat successful and be part of the community. So we just thank you for all the, he said, we give him a lot, you give him a lot to us because you allowed us to be a part of the Portsmouth family, which is more than we could ever ask for. God bless y'all.
We're going to have our photographs taken. Please. We're going to have family. Thank you for joining us tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. Paige. And while he does that, I'm going to ask the city clerk, ma'am, would you read the protocol, announce the protocol for speakers, please?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, City Council's rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you, ma'am. And we have two public hearings on code amendments. The first is, and this is the General Item 17533, and the first public hearing is CA 1703. And Madam Clerk, would you read the caption that goes along with this public hearing, please?
Yes, sir. CA 1703, citywide. Robert C. Barclay IV, on behalf of Portsmouth Development Foundation, Inc., is requesting amendments to the text of the zoning ordinance to amend the use-specific standards for self-service storage found in Section 40.1-4.3C10. The proposed revisions would allow for multi-story self-service storage facilities, which are now prohibited by the ordinance. The proposed amendments would continue to allow single-story self-storage facilities, but would allow multi-story facilities with appropriate development standards. The proposed amendments include a revision to the definitions to reference self-service storage rather than mini warehouse and accommodate both single and multi-story facilities.
And there is a accompanying ordinance that goes with this?
Well, that, this is first reading, so it's just the hearing.
All righty. The Chair will now open the public hearing. Anybody desiring to speak either for or against the public hearing? And the first speaker is Robert Barclay. And I think you're here to answer any questions? Or Bob, do you have any? Yes, Mr. Barclay, let Bob come forward, please.
Good evening, Mayor Rowe, Vice Mayor Cherry, and members of City Council. And I would take one second myself to thank the Vice Mayor for his service to the Planning Commission. I worked with him back during his time there. And I'd also like to thank him for his service as a liaison. He's been an excellent liaison to the Planning Commission in that role. And we certainly appreciate it, and we'll miss his presence at our meetings. With that, I'll talk about our code amendment. And as noted, this is about our self-storage, self-service storage facilities. I think everyone's fairly familiar with these things, but I'll give you an example. This is what's currently permitted by our ordinance. I think this is something you're familiar with. Again, this is a single-story self-service facility. This is a relatively new one. It's out on Airline Boulevard, if you're heading out towards Chesapeake, if you're going in that section of Airline. This was built under the current zoning code, and it follows the single-story standards. Prior to the current ordinance being adopted, we had more modern facilities. We've had two similar to this built. This facility here is the one on Victory Boulevard. It's out near Williams Court. We have another one similar. We have a slide of that in a minute. We have a similar one on Greenwood Drive. I think everyone's pretty familiar with, again, a multi-storage facility. So, and something that's somewhat unusual, this is a code amendment that's actually generated by a citizen applicant as opposed to Planning Commission or City Council. We had some meetings with a proposed developer to look at building one of these multi-story type facilities. And as we reviewed our zoning code requirements, we were surprised to find that when the new ordinance was adopted, in fact, it only accommodated the single-story type facilities and did not have any standards at all for the multi-story. So not only did we not have standards, the two most recent multi-story facilities were put into non-conforming status, since we don't have any standards for those things. So in essence, even though we had a private citizen come in with an application, this was a collaborative effort between the staff and the applicant to address this, what we consider a shortcoming in our code. So as noted there, we work very closely with them. We're trying to recognize more land-efficient, mini-storage facilities. And we're also noting that with the number of multifamily units being built in the city, the demand for storage is going to go up as we get more of those types of units. So the proposed amendments you have before you tonight basically go back and add to what's currently in the code, standards that would allow both types of facilities, both the single-story and the multi-story. And as you can imagine, when you look at the two, there is some difference between parking standards. The single-story units are designed for you to drive up to your unit. I think everybody's familiar with the way those operate. You drive in, you roll the door up. Multi-story units don't have that capability. So they need to have, they have a different parking standard so that people trying to access their units inside the building will have more parking. So the multi-story units have a higher parking requirement in terms of standard parking than others. So we also wanted to address appearance and rights of ways and make sure that our zoning code addressed both types of mini-storage units. Here's sort of a quick slide of some mini-storage units in Portsmouth. They just kind of walk around, top left, that's the one I just showed you. That's the one on Airline. Mentioned the one on the top right, that's the Victory Boulevard, one there by Williams Court. The bottom right is a facility, most of you are familiar with, that's the self-storage on London Boulevard. And the one on the bottom left, that's the one out at Greenwood Drive. So that's the two types of mini-storage facilities we're trying to establish the complete set of regulations for with this code amendment. So with that, be glad to answer any questions. Again, it's a relatively straightforward set of code amendments. We're just trying to make sure we have complete standards in place for both types of units, since we have both types in the city. And we do anticipate over time the likelihood of more requests for this type of use.
Thank you. Does any member of council have a question for Mr. Baldwin? Thank you. All right, now I'll declare the public hearing open. Anybody desiring to speak either in for or against this amendment, please come forward, state your name and your address, please.
My name is Robert Barclay, and my business address is 200 High Street, Suite 500 Portsmouth, Virginia 23704. And I'm here as the attorney for the potential developer of a site in Portsmouth. And really, I'm just here to answer any questions you might have. I worked collaboratively with the staff to develop this code change. When we first came to the city to apply for a use permit, and we realized that the code didn't accommodate the sort of more modern self-storage facility. And the staff's been very, very helpful in helping us to collaboratively come up with a change to the ordinance. And this is what we see before you tonight. And hopefully, if it's adopted, my client will be able to move forward for project in Portsmouth.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? Mr. Barclay, thank you.
I just wanted to also take a minute to congratulate Vice Mayor Cherry. He and I go back to the Planning Commission. When I was in the Planning Commission, and I think your Civic League had an issue, and then later on, you followed me on the Planning Commission.
That was in 1993.
Yeah, yeah. Your hair was darker, and I had hair. Exactly. Thanks very much.
Is there anybody else that wants to speak either for or against this amendment? Please come to the lectern, and you'll have five minutes. Seeing none, I declare the public hearing closed. And so that we can put this matter before us, there's our motion to approve on first reading. Move with the option?
Second.
We have a motion for approval that's been duly seconded. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion passes?
Yes, sir.
Which brings us to Item CA 17-04, which is another public hearing and another proposed amendment to the city code. Will you read the caption, please?
Yes, sir. Item BCA 1704, citywide. The city of Portsmouth proposes to amend the text of the zoning ordinance to repeal and replace Section 40-1-5.11, signs which set out the standards and requirements for all forms of signs, permanent and temporary, and consolidates all sign provisions into a single location within the zoning ordinance. These amendments are proposed to comply with the recent U.S. Supreme Court case of Reed versus Town of Gilbert, Arizona, and to include signs that were not previously addressed by the sign regulations, such as wind-sell signs and electronic LED signs.
Thank you, ma'am. And Madam City Manager, do you have a presentation on this, please?
Yes. Mr. Baldwin will come forward.
Thank you, and good evening once again. And this is a topic we have, I believe, had a couple of City Council briefings during work session. And we're certainly glad to get to the end of this process. We've been working on this for nearly a year. As we had mentioned before, and as noted in the caption, and the revision of our sign regulations, and this is a significant revision, was driven by that U.S. Supreme Court case, the Reed versus Town of Gilbert, Arizona. For those people who have seen the slide before, that's the sign that got involved in a code enforcement action from the Town of Gilbert. It was a portable sign, about the size of a real estate sign. The town had some pretty stringent standards, just to give you a little brief on that. They allowed the church to put those signs. The church did not have a fixed location, so they would move these signs around to identify wherever their church service was being held on any given weekend. And the code that the town had was that these signs could only go up 12 hours before service. They had one hour after the service to remove them. The church ultimately thought that was an onerous regulation. And this ended up working its way all the way up to the U.S. Supreme Court. And at that point, the court made some findings that were really contrary to the way prior findings have been regarding sign regulations, pretty significant changes. And you will see almost every locality, if not every locality in the country, going through this process of revising their sign regulations now based on that. And primarily, as noted on this slide here, the number one thing is you had to get, you have to get away from content-based sign regulations. And the general way we describe that is you have to read the sign to know what it's regulating. That's probably illegal. These are supposed to be content-neutral. It's a First Amendment issue. And so therefore, our current sign ordinance, as in most localities, has a lot of content specific. We call out the kind of sign. It's an institutional sign, or it's whatever the case. It's a real estate sign. It's this kind of sign. All of those kinds of terminology have been deemed to be, you're having different sets of regulations, and that's not considered after that case to be legal. So therefore, what was allowed under that regulation, you can regulate different types of signs, different types of signs, by the zoning district they're in. You can regulate whether they are temporary or permanent. You can regulate whether it's a freestanding sign or a wall-mounted sign. You can do sign sizes. You can do lighting, but you can't get in any way, shape, or form involved with the message. And that creates quite a challenge when you've got a history of sign regulations kind of built on the old model. In addition, and again, this is a council's direction, as we've been working through the process of eliminating the D2 form-based code, also working through the D1 code, we wanted to take those other portions of our zoning code that were in separate volumes. You know, we've had We've had those presentations where you've seen the multiple volumes of things we do zoning. We've taken the D1 and D2 sign regulations. We have moved them into the one set of sign regulations. So, now we'd have one single set of sign regulations. We'd also have one single set of definitions, so we don't have different signs being referred to by different names and that type of thing. So, we've moved forward to that, and this is, again, similar to what we did with the parking regulations, moving those D1, D2 regulations into the standard zoning code. And the last thing we did, we made sure we went back through the code of Virginia to make sure our sign regulations were state code compliant. We had a few areas we found we weren't exactly in step with the state code requirements. We wanted to fix that. So, again, in the new text for our proposed sign regulations, we are making it very clear we have no intent to violate free speech standards. That's a recommendation. We've had to put that language specifically in. Again, we've eliminated the references to content. We've also, there's a series of signs you may see in the code. Some signs are exempt. Some signs don't require a permit. We made it very clear what the distinction is in there, just to give you an example. An exempt sign might be a gravestone. Make sure we're not going out on tombstones and regulating that as a sign. That's exempt. Or you might have some signs that don't need a zoning compliance permit, but they're regulated by the zoning code. You still have to follow a standard, but you don't need to come in to get a permit. Those are all pretty minor types of signs. And then, again, we're eliminating this reference to content. The other thing we're attempting to do has been part of our effort in the process of revising the zoning regulations, trying to make sure our regulators have better clarity, people understand what we're describing, trying to get away from too much jargon so that people know exactly what we're talking about. And then, we had a few types of signs that we have, I think you're pretty familiar with the same around town, that our code simply had no reference to. The current sign regulations predated our 2010 code. They were actually amended in 2009. So, signs like these electronic message signs you see in commercial businesses, our ordinance, those types of signs go up, but it doesn't regulate those types of moving things, which can be considered a hazard or too bright or whatever. So, we want to make sure we provide for those. We clarified our maintenance provisions, again, making sure it's a requirement if you put up a sign, you're required to maintain it in good condition. And then, again, we provided tables and graphs showing what the different types of signs are, so it's easy for someone to see the definition of a sign, see a graphic representation of it, and know what we're regulating. Again, I mentioned this already, moving all of the D1, D2 into the single set of sign regulations. One other thing we're trying to do is deal with some of our procedural requirements, some of those things whether they need a permit or not. We get into some issues on site plan review with buildings, whether or not we need to be looking at their sign, their signage for a building or not. So, we want to make sure that that was something our current process. We normally look at a building, then look at a sign, and we find out quite often that the sign and the building don't work very well together. So, we've provided the opportunity to put the sign and the building plans together. We have an alternate signage plan. I think you're maybe aware of this. We've used this a couple of times, Victory, I mean, the Kroger Marketplace, the amphitheater next door to the building, the pavilion, where you have some sort of a unique use, either a very large shopping center or something unique like a performance theater where standard sign regulations you might use for a smaller store don't really work very well there. So, there's an opportunity to do an alternative signage plan under our current code that's in there, but it is a process that goes through the planning commission and based on a prior Virginia Supreme Court case, if we conclude the planning commission doesn't have authority to do that. So, we've created a process doing the same basic thing through the Board of Zoning Appeals where it is permitted to do that. So, that's been built in there as well. So, again, we're trying to make sure our processes are code compliant. A couple of other things people may not be aware of, and just to make sure we clarify, this is one that I'm sure you're going to be interested in. The first one, we made it clear that we're not regulating color. I'll use that 7-Eleven sign up there. You can see the logo color sign that has the stripes on it. But we want to make sure that when we're calculating the sign area for 7-Eleven, it's just bands of color. That's not what we're calculating. We're calculating letters and logos, not bands of color. So, make that clear. The second thing is, another question always comes about political campaign signs. This is probably the most protected types of signs in the regulatory realm. And in this code, they are proposed to be completely exempt. And bear in mind, this is on the zoning side. This does not apply to the right-of-way. So, when it comes to the zoning side, in keeping with the Supreme Court case, they would be exempt from regulation in our current code. There's also provision in the state code that expresses that exact same opinion, so we're also compliant with the state code on that. And then, finally, we did also create that exception process for, again, a sign overlay or if anyone needs an exception to a design standard in the code. So, with that, I think what we'd like to, again, explain, we've taken our code. We've revised it to comply with the U.S. Supreme Court case. This will be provided to the Barkley Group, assuming city council were to adopt this, so that this will get rolled into our zoning ordinance project, and there'll be an additional opportunity to go back and tweak it if need be. And then, the last thing I'd just like to do is I'd like to thank Jeff Miller from the City Attorney's Office. He spent a great deal of time sitting in with us as we went through this process. This is obviously a lot of a legal process as much of a planning process, and so I'd like to thank him for his time as well. And with that, be glad to answer any questions you have.
Does any member of council have any questions? Vice Mayor Cherry?
Not a question, ma'am. Just a comment, because I watched the planning staff and the planning commission go through this, and I got to tell you, they put a lot of work into this and to make sure we were in compliance with everything and a lot of hours. And they didn't pull up any campaign signs this season. So, thank you, Bob, because that was a tough. We've always had, in my days on planning commission, there's always been questions about signs, where you can put them, what size it can be, and what color, and all those kind of things. So, thank you, Bob. That was a lot of good work from everybody, from the staff to the planning commission and to the City Attorney's Office as well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions or comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
And now, I'll declare the public hearing on this amendment to the city zoning ordinance to repeal and replace the city's sign ordinance. I declare the public hearing open. Is there anybody that wants to speak either for or against this matter? And if you do, please come to the lectern, state your name and your address. Is there anybody that wants to speak either for or against this matter? Hearing none. This public hearing is closed, and the chair will entertain a motion to approve on first reading.
Move adoption?
Second.
We have a motion that's been made and duly seconded to approve this on its first reading. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
Which brings us to item 15534, which is invitation for bids for a wireless facility franchise. Is this the next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir.
And please?
Item 17-534 is in receipt of bids pursuant to an invitation for bids for a wireless facilities franchise. In accordance with state law, public notice was placed in the local press by the city clerk's office to accept bids for a non-exclusive wireless facilities franchise agreement. The agreement will have a term of 10 years with up to three renewable terms of five years each, and will allow for the placement of wireless facilities within the city's right-of-way.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And Madam Clerk, how many bids have we received?
One bid has been received.
Please read the bid and mark it for identification, please.
Yes, sir. Mobility LLC has submitted the following bid. Dear Mrs. White, please consider this correspondence a formal request to submit a bid for a wireless facilities franchise with the city of Portsmouth, Virginia. Mobility LLC is the largest privately-held telecommunications infrastructure provider in the United States and seeks access to right-of-way for the installation of facilities used in the provision of communication services. Subject to review, negotiation, and execution of the final form of the agreement, Mobility agrees to comply with the city's standard non-exclusive wireless facilities franchise agreement. Please contact me with questions. Mobility permitting manager Candace Slade looks forward to attending the Portsmouth City Council meeting on December 12, 2017.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And to the audience, are there any additional bids? And I'll ask the question again. Does anyone desire to submit an additional bid? If not, I declare that the bid process is closed, and we will now have a public hearing on this matter. And Madam Clerk, will you read the caption of the ordinance pertaining to this matter?
Yes, sir. Adoption of an ordinance accepting the bid by Mobility, excuse me, for the non-exclusive wireless facilities franchise agreement, having a term of 10 years with up to three renewable terms of five years each, authorizing the placement of wireless facilities within the city's public ways.
Thank you, ma'am. I now declare this public hearing open. Is there anybody that desires to speak on this matter, one way or the other? Please come to the lectern and state your name and your address, please.
Good evening, counsel. My name is Candace Jimenez Slade. I am the permitting manager for Mobility. My address is 2736 Stanhope Avenue in Norfolk, Virginia, 23704. Good evening again. I was coming here to try to answer any questions that you all may have as Mobility is requesting the you-all grant franchise agreement for access to the right-of-way for small cell installation. And I understand that there were some previous concerns, and I just want to make sure that they were addressed and that we can count on your support today.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any additional speakers? Is there anybody that wants to speak either for or against or in any way on this matter?
Good evening. My timer is... Good evening, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of council, and fellow interested parties. I'm concerned about items that appear in the appendix of the proposed ordinance. The appendix, in this case, contains the meat of the matter, and I would like to turn your attention first to the definitions section. "Public way" is used quite a bit in this ordinance. According to what I have in front of me, "public way" means and includes "all public streets now or hereafter held or controlled by the city, but only to the extent of the city's right, title, interest, or authority to grant a license to occupy and use such streets and easements for communications facilities." Now, as a non-lawyer, my question is, is that 10-foot strip in front of my property, which is an easement area controlled by the city, a potential site for a structure that will promote, that will enable the 5G system to operate? And if it is, how many of these bits of technology could I anticipate being placed on my property within that 10-foot easement area? My understanding from a presentation I attended some time ago is that 5G does not have the range of the existing 4G infrastructure, and so their transmitters have to be closer together to provide the desirable amount of coverage. Does that mean I would have two or three on my property if they were to be sighted there? So, I would constantly have to maneuver my lawnmower around them if they were sighted there? This would be a matter of interest to me and, I presume, many other people in the city. The next issue I have is with the section dealing with fees. There is a $50 annual fee provided and a $1,000 annual fee. If I can get my computer to cooperate and take me to that. So, this fee would be collected after the agreement is entered into and annually thereafter for the life of the agreement. Now, I have some issues with the fee being static for a 10-year period of time. As we've seen from a business model used by the concessionaire on the tunnels, they have a contract that allows them to raise their tolls annually by the greater of 3.5% or the increase in the Consumer Price Index. I would think that we, as a city intending to derive revenue from this arrangement, would also want to index the fee that we're charging the bidders, those people providing these services, to account for the time value of money rather than having it frozen in place for at least 10 years. The other question I would raise is whether this appendix, as it is constituted, will increase or decrease the digital divide in our city between those people who have financial resources to be full participants and those who are resource-deprived. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other speak... Dr. Whitaker?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. There's no objection from council. Can we have Ms. Candace Slade to come back to the podium to address the issue of the transponder location that was just raised?
Does anybody have any problems with that? Let's hold that to the end of the public hearing.
Yeah, that's fine.
Any other speakers that want to speak either for or against or just make a comment, please come to the lectern and identify yourself and give your name and address. Are there any other speakers? Okay, well, I'll declare the public hearing closed, and with council's concurrence, I'll ask the applicant to come back to the lectern and address the questions.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Could you speak in the mic, please?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, the issue was raised, and it has been discussed several times during our council meeting. The location of the transponders with 5G requiring, having a shorter range and requiring more transponders, and the citizen raised the issue in regards to it being located in the 10-foot area right-of-way in front of the house, in front of properties. What is the plans as far as the location using it? I know there has been some discussion about using existing city properties and structures.
Yes, sir. The gentleman's assessment is incorrect. For the city of Portsmouth, we have proposed 11 new small cells in the entire city. Not to say that that will not increase in time, but as of right now, there are 11 proposed, and all those 11 will be attachment to existing poles, either owned by Dominion or Verizon. We do not have any new poles proposed in the city of Portsmouth right now.
All right. And also, can you elaborate as well? You will be providing services particularly for Sprint.
We are constructing infrastructure for Sprint to house their antennas, yes, sir. We are an infrastructure utility company, not a service provider, is what I'd like to reiterate.
Okay, all right.
Any further questions from anybody on council? Councilwoman Lisa Lukasberg?
What other areas are you servicing in the Sampson Roads area?
Meaning where have we constructed or where have we been granted a franchise?
Yes.
Currently constructing in Norfolk. We've been constructing in Norfolk for over a year now. And we have constructed in York County as well. Franchise agreement was secured with Virginia Beach this summer. And I have recently received approvals to construct there, but have not started yet.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
The chair recognizes Councilman Moody.
Thank you, Mayor. I have no question for the speaker, but the previous speaker brought up a couple of points. I hear what the current speaker is saying about the number of poles that they propose. But what does our ordinance allow? Because I think the gentleman's concern is a valid concern. What is allowed? I would also ask, what is the rate, the length of the fee? Is that set by the state or can that be adjusted by the city?
Thank you, sir. The city attorney was probably best equipped to answer those questions. Mr. City Attorney?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of city council. As it relates to co-locating on existing facilities, there was an upper limit placed. As I believe I mentioned in the prior setting, with regard to new poles, we did negotiate and establish a fee in accordance with neighboring communities. There is some provision in that that it must meet current law. Because, of course, as we've said before and in some of the discussions I've shared with you, we are trying to maximize the city's ability to control and recognize our actual cost in terms of deriving our fees. However, that does not necessarily mean that the state will not place some limitations over time. But as you all know, we have placed those issues on the agenda for our legislative session to buttress any attempt to try to further limit our abilities with regard to that. But the new pole $1,000 limit was secured with regard to competitive rate with our neighboring cities and recognizing the, any types of limitations the state might put on us.
Yes, sir.
How about, Mayor, my question is to the attorney. How about the issue of the easement, that 10-foot easement? His concern is and my concern, I'm sure everybody's concern, is poles being placed in that in front of your property?
Certainly. Also, and I failed to mention earlier, Councilman Moody, to address your question. As you will recall in the earlier presentations, when we get to the new pole issue, these issues will come before various city bodies as those issues come up. And as I've explained to you, the density issue really is dependent on particular vendors' services and their capabilities. However, when those poles come up and those issues come forward, we'll have a better sense of the level of proximity, and you all will have another time period to chime in. As I said before, first person in, we probably won't have much of an issue. As the speaker said, it will be placed, if it's decided that it's going to run along that street, it will be placed somewhere in that right-of-way, which is city-accessible, precise placement. There is no particular requirement. And again, first person in, last person in, you all will have an opportunity to chime in if we reach a frequency that creates some particular problems. But as you all also know, the providers have the opportunity to place it in the right-of-way or on a private property, paying a fee to the private owner, or placing it within our right-of-way. So there are some options where if one neighbor, let's say, may not want to have it in their right-of-way, another neighbor may want to have it, actually not in the right-of-way, but on their property. So there are some options. There's, as we see it now, there will not be massive imposition on personal property holders.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Whitaker?
Yes. Just for clarity, unlike the technology that we presently have, where we have the towers and you can have multi-producers using one tower, with this technology, since this is a non-exclusive franchise agreement, that's saying then that just in this case, so Sprint would come through with their transponders, Verizon comes through and any other provider. So is that what you're saying? That the frequency you're talking about is that as these different providers look to provide the 5G, that this whole issue of placement will have to be addressed at that time?
Certainly, because some folks may have a distance in a particular area that may be 100 feet apart. Somebody may have something shorter or longer. When you have particular facilities in that area, that might extend the period, the distance they can put it, or shorten the distance. So, yes, they will come back. And of course, as technology moves along, I'm sure there will be some adjustments also. But there is still, with regard to co-location, there's still the anticipation that three providers could be on the same pole and not require additional new facilities in the area.
So their franchise agreement allows for co-producers?
So for instance, where the applicant has said they're placing theirs on a Dominion pole, that does not necessarily preclude someone else from getting on the Dominion pole, too.
Okay, yeah.
I think it's important to point out, and this is in the form of a question to the city attorney, that if we have another company, let's say the ABC Company, that wants to install such a system, they too must go through the franchise process, and there's another franchise ordinance.
Certainly. And again, as time and experience provides, we will be able to have an opportunity to see what the interaction and the intersection and how this develops. As the applicant has said, 11 poles, we may not be an issue. As we go forward, there may be another 11 poles. And again, that does not establish their placement where they will be. You all will get a more fuller picture in terms of interaction and have an opportunity to address that.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions? Thank you, ma'am. Let me say this to the audience. The procedure that we're going through tonight is prescribed by state code and the Constitution, actually, because we're franchising the use of our public right-of-way. And that is why we've had this procedure tonight. Again, it is prescribed by state law. And typically, on matters that come before council, the city manager has a recommendation. And the chair will ask you, Madam City Manager, do you have a recommendation on this matter?
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of city council, I do have a recommendation. City staff recommends that the bid for Mobility LLC be accepted.
Thank you, ma'am. Now that we had concluded the public hearing and we have the city manager's recommendation, Madam Clerk, will you read the caption of the ordinance again, please?
An ordinance accepting the bid submitted by Mobility LLC for a non-exclusive wireless facilities franchise agreement, having a term of 10 years with up to three renewable terms of five years each, authorizing the placement of wireless facilities within the city's public ways.
So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Move for adoption.
Sir, a second. We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded to adopt the ordinance. Any discussion? Hearing done. All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And the motion carries. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir.
Which brings us to item, the city manager's report, item 15, oh, 17-536. And this is the consideration of a certain ordinance. Would you read the caption of the ordinance, ma'am?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting a donation of $20,000 of, excuse me, to the city from the Elizabeth River Project and appropriating said funds to the FY 2018 Grants Fund for use for the continued development of Paradise Creek Nature Park.
Thank you, ma'am. So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Move for adoption.
Is there a second? We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded to adopt the ordinance. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing done. Ready for a question? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries?
Yes, sir.
Which brings us to item 17-537, which is the consideration of another ordinance. Would you read the caption of the ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance authorizing the transfer of $480,000 within the fire rescue and emergency services category of the FY 2018 general fund budget from the salaries line item to the overtime line item for the purpose of paying overtime costs.
Thank you, ma'am. So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt the ordinance? Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion that's been made and it's been seconded. Any discussion on the question? Dr. Whitaker?
Yes, this is for the city manager. As you know, there's been a significant amount of overtime that has been paid through the fire, to the fire department. Question dealing with the issue I've raised earlier in regards to the staffing model. Where are we on that as far as looking at how the department is staffed?
Madam City Manager?
Yeah, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of city council. As I shared, the human resources director, along with fire and police, are working with Dr. Mars, our consultant, who is looking at staffing and both for our city fire department and a police department. I also like to add that I presented to you that all of the positions were filled. We have our training academy that started November 20. And we had five civilian positions that were open, which are currently being filled. We do have one position that has become vacant as a result of, recent as a result of a death of one of our firefighters.
Dr. Patton, you mentioned Dr. Mars?
Yes.
Is that an outside consult? Who is that?
Yes, Dr. Mars has been working with the city's fire and police now for about a year, Dr. Whitaker.
And this person will be doing a staffing model?
We're looking at, from several facets as it returns to policing, dealing with hiring practices, dealing with, looking at staffing, and also dealing with our civil service commission and our hiring process.
So in regards to whether we are actually staffing as needed, when will council get some type of statistical analysis or study update as to staffing model?
I will bring information to that regard back as we are working on the 2019 budget as it pertains to the work, the total work that is being done through fire and police with our consultant.
So would that be in the form of a recommendation to do a study? Do a study? Exactly where are you on that?
I would say that the work that they are currently doing is looking at staffing. You're asking, are they developing a new model? And at this time, I am not saying that a new model for staffing for our fire, our police is to be developed. They're looking at our, both entities to see whether or not it is currently staffed at the model that it should be.
Right, because I don't see how we can intelligently vote on budgets if we don't have information as to the staffing and whether that staffing is appropriate.
We will be working on the entire process as we begin to work on the 2019 budget.
Any further discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries? Which brings us to item 17-538, which is the consideration of the adoption of a certain appropriation ordinance. And ma'am, would you read the caption of the ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance appropriating $43,529,572 by classification to the FY 2018 operating budget for the Portsmouth Public Schools to implement the third quarter of the annual budget.
Thank you, ma'am. In order to put this before us for our consideration, is there a motion to approve?
Move for adoption.
Is there a second? Okay. And we do have one registered speaker, Mark Godolgi-Yatroski. And sir, you have five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of council and fellow citizens. As you have heard on at least two other occasions this year, I object to this form of allocation of school funds. I believe that with what leads up to this particular item appearing on the agenda, there is no reason for you not to appropriate them for the year when you enter the new fiscal year or when you adopt the budget. The motivation for breaking the schools' allocations of local funds into four installments dates back to the grand jury proceedings that occurred some years ago. And my explanation of council's action is that it was done to deflect criticism on council for lack of oversight. I have seen no greater oversight in terms of your reviewing the expenditures of the school system for the quarter just concluded. No interaction with the school board to address any discrepancies that you find with the way they have spent the monies you've appropriated. And so this is just an exercise in appearing to maintain control over their budget. Now, if there were no harm in this exercise other than your consuming time three times a year in addition to the one that is actually necessary, that would be well and good. Okay, it's your time. Use it as you like, efficiently or inefficiently. But the harm that is done, in my view, is denying the school system access to the full amount of money that you have set aside for them in the budget process. So if there is an extraordinary expense in any particular line item, they have to come back and wait until you're willing to, until, I'm sorry, until the appointed time or ask for a special allocation. I don't see why that's necessary, given the lack of review that you all have exercised on a quarterly basis. So this, to me, is just a charade and it's a complication for them that they don't need. As I have also off-stated and predating the council of 2017, the school board is disadvantaged as a public body in that it has no revenue of its own. as a public body in that it has no revenue of its own. Everything flows through this body. And unlike this body, the city council, they have no fund balance. Essentially, you are their safety net. And I have found city council, predating the council of 2017, but including the council of 2017, to be an unreliable partner. There has been bullying. There has been coercion. There has been negotiation and bad faith, in my view. So I would ask you to be honest and genuine and change this method of allocation back to allocation one time on an annual basis. Thank you very much.
The chair recognizes Dr. Whitaker.
Yes, I just want to say I concur with what the speaker said, and I look forward to having some serious discussion about that issue at budget time.
Thank you, sir. Any further comments or discussion on this matter? If not, we'll consider the question. All in favor of the motion to adopt, vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries. Which brings us to item 17539, which is the consideration of an ordinance to amend certain sections of the city code. Ma'am, would you read the caption of that ordinance?
Yes, sir. An ordinance to amend and re-ordain Article 11 of Chapter 32 of the Code of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia, streets, sidewalks, and local improvements by changing the name of Article 11 to wireless facilities, creating Division 1 through 5, thereof, amending and/or moving existing Section 32-301 through 32-310, and establishing new additional sections, all for the purpose of governing the placement of wireless facilities within the city's public ways.
Thank you, ma'am. In order for us to consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Move for adoption.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
We have now before us item 17540, which is the consideration of a certain resolution. Madam Clerk, would you read that caption, please?
Yes, sir. A resolution accepting the FY 2017 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for the City of Portsmouth.
Thank you, ma'am. In order for us to consider this matter, is there a motion to approve and adopt the resolution?
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Motion to adopt. All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
Which brings us to item 17541, which is the consideration of the adoption of a motion accepting and approving the 2018 calendar of the city council and its meetings. Is there such a motion?
Move for adoption.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion to adopt and accept the 2018 calendar of city council meetings, and we do have a registered speaker, Mark Godolgi-Yatroski. Sir, you got five minutes.
Good evening. One last time, Mr. Mayor, Honorable Members of Council, and fellow interested parties. The item of your calendar that I want to focus in on is your retreat. I'm happy to see that the calendar includes a location for the retreat so that everybody is on notice, members of council and the public, as to when this is to occur and where it is to occur. I was dismayed last year that two members of council were absent from the retreat. One had a family emergency. The other member had issues with the process by which this came together. Because the council was reconstituted at the beginning of 2017, there was not the same time window for everybody to have input into the planning of the retreat. So this time around, I would ask you all to ensure that if those dates that are posted, that are published on the calendar do not work for you, make that known in time to change it. Because I see these meetings as very important. There is a team-building aspect to it. There is a visioning aspect to it. And there is a long-form conversational aspect to it that enables you all to work out some things in advance, to come together around the issues likely to be on your agendas for the coming year, and, and reach some kind of agreement, reach some kind of modus, mode of operation that you all can agree to. I was particularly disappointed by the absence of two advocates for public education at that, at that retreat last year. And I think there was some damage done in terms of how council proceeded.
Sir, the, the object before us is the calendar?
Yes, sir.
Okay. This calendar for 2018.
And I'm talking about the value of the retreat. I believe that there are issues that are close to the hearts of different members of council where if one of them is absent in a retreat setting, those issues will not necessarily get heard or get a fair hearing. So I strongly urge all of you to attend. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. We have a motion that's been made to approve and accept the calendar. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
Which brings us to new business. Item 17542, boards and commissions. Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor Cherry.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I'd like to move the following appointments. First, to the Downtown Design Committee, the reappointment of Cindy Robbins and Ivan To the Behavior, Health Services Advisory Board, Margaret Mills. To the Board of Zoning Appeals, Joanne Clark. To the Downtown Design Committee, Chris Crowder. To the History Commission, Betty Jo Griffin. To the Historic Preservation Committee, Paula Sawyer. To the Museum of the Fire and Arts Commission, Kendra Robertson. To the Parks and Recreation Commission, Susan Wilson. To the Planning Commission, Edwina Ricks. To the Portsmouth Port Industrial Commission, Ronald Peterman. And to the Portsmouth Supplemental Retirement Board, David, excuse me, Landon Moore, Mark Munson. And also to the School OPEB Trustee Committee, Mark Munson. That ends the nominations. Mr. Mayor.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to make these appointments. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
Which brings us to, I've lost the agenda. Which brings us to items submitted by council. Do we have any items?
May I just want to recognize the presence of two school board members, Ms. Allen and Mr. Patilio.
Thank you, sir. And thank you. Councilman Clark.
Excuse me. I just want, as Dr. Patton stated earlier, unfortunately, we, we lost one of our firefighters this past weekend, and I'd just like to let everybody know that there will be a celebration of life ceremony for Lieutenant Ben Fuller. It's this coming Sunday, the 17th, at 3:00 PM at the Scottish Wright at 3401 Cedar Lane in the Churchland area. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other report on pending items? Dr. Patton?
Mayor, the pending item that we have, I'm going to ask the city attorney to speak to it as it pertains to the CX, CSX railroad.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of city council, as you recall, last week, there were several questions posed with regard to the condition of some CSX property. In the interim, I have met with the Department of Permits and Inspections. We have looked at the issues. There are some concerns with regard to federal preemption on railroad activities. However, we have, are in the process of sending out notices to try to gain compliance from CSX, and if need be, move through the process to guarantee that property is addressed. But there is some tension between federal preemption, depending on the operations on those particular properties, and whether or not local zoning can override that preemption. But we are moving forward with issuing notices and trying to gain some compliance out of the CSX property owners.
Thank you, sir. This brings us to agenda item 17545. Non-agenda speakers. And the first speaker is Barry Randall. And sir, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Rowe and members of council. Barry Randall, Prentice Park, Prentice Park Section of Portsmouth. I'm here tonight. I had not planned on speaking for the duration of this year. Been kind of just studying and watching some things and, and, but after reading today's paper, I was compelled to speak, very disappointed in reference to, I believe, the article in reference to the apartments that have applied to the gentleman with Waldo or whatever it is that wanted to build some low-income housing. I don't know if those of you all that was quoted in the paper that said that absolutely not, you know, you don't want to just jump on the first name because you want a grocery store. You have a grocery store by I C Norcom High School. We need to support that. Secondly, I don't know if you all were concerned because PRHA was mentioned. I believe they are the one that own the property. But my problem is, you don't have to worry about PRHA people coming to move there if that's what your problem is. You have city workers that work directly for you guys that can't even afford to live across the street in Harbor Vista. Because the rent there, if you totaled up for the year, is half of what your workers make, some of especially those on the garbage truck. So I'm trying to figure out what is the problem with those that could make 30,000 to 45,000 dollars that would like to be able to pay rent that will be between 700 and 900 dollars a month? Because in PRHA property or hood properties, which I believe hood has a few properties around here, you have individuals that make too much money so they can't live there. And then you have apartments that we have coming up in the city that cost too much. So my, you know, my point is, you know, what is the real issue that you all don't want to work with people in the middle? I've come up here on several occasions talking about crime, talking about crime. You know, we have three individuals that were murdered in the city that were all born by the same mother. You would think that some of you all would get it. You still haven't gotten it. I met with, I believe, you, Mayor Rowe and Elizabeth Simmons, December of last year. We talked about doing some things to engage the community, and nothing has happened. I've met with Dr. Patton and her two deputies about almost a year ago as well about some things, and actually still nothing has really happened. And, you know, I got a little discouraged, and then the police officer that, that was shot, my heart goes out to her. Thank God for her colleagues that was able to help keep her here. But then I said to myself, I said, well, maybe they'll get it now because, you know, let's be fair. You know, anybody knows, you know, we have the Black Lives Matter movements and what have you, but we have to be fair. You know, she was doing her job. She see a kid that's a runaway. She just going to apprehend him, and now she's shot. So now we have police officers who may pull their triggers first. So then we're going to be probably stuck with another ranking situation because we have a council that is reactive as opposed to being proactive because you all could care less about crime. You know, fooled me once, shame on you. Fooled me twice, shame on me. I get it now. I, I, some of you all that I've talked to and talked to, I won't talk to you too much more about these types of things because I guess at some point, as long as you feed the little poor kids in the community, you think you've done your job, as long as you come to some of these events that you get to take a picture at, you know, I guess you get to think you've done your job. I've done some research. I was looking because I wanted to see what some of you all had to say about crime, had to say about things that, Mr. Clark, you know, this isn't an attack on you, you know, Mayor Wright, Mayor, Mayor Wright brought you to my church about two years ago because he thought you would be good for council and what have you. So, you know, we have somewhat of a relationship. But I was reading in the paper where you said, you know, one of the things that we could do, you know, for crime is to hire more police officers. But I've yet to hear you speak of some things. But what I did notice, and you can correct me, you were retired or are retired of over 20 years of service, but yet you just voted. You didn't abstain from voting to give yourself a bonus. But again, you can explain that better because I don't want to accuse you of anything. My point is, are you all going to continue to serve us going into next year, doing favors for certain friends, trying to, you know, placate us? I heard you all telling Mr. Barnes, oh, we, we, we with you with what you're doing. He received phone calls, you know, days after that, oh, you know, we don't really have the space for your organization. However, if you disband your organization and come on and be a part of ours, we'll have some space for you. So, you know, going into the new year, hopefully, we all can be on one accord and really take these matters serious. So we don't want to get, again, behind other issues that are coming up in the community after a police officer shooting somebody or another family member, another family losing several members to gun violence. We have 19 murders in the city of this year.
Thank you, sir. Your time is up. The next speaker is Clyde Toler. And sir, you have five minutes.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, sign on. City manager, city attorney, Ms. Whitehead, stay. Clyde Toler, 1029 Blair Street, Paul View. I want to say, Mr. Cherry, thank you. I saw your sister, but you ain't saying nothing about all your brothers. I'm your brother. Look at all the other brothers in here. Stand up, brother, and let them see y'all. You know what I mean, under the craft. Get up. But they here. You got a lot of brothers here. Next time, mention those brothers, all right? You be all right. But the first thing I want you to do when you take over down there, I don't want to stand in that line an hour or something. And then when I get up there, about five people, two people at the one, and they say, I'm going to lunch. Ah, they have six one, let's say I have six people up there at that one. So you keep that in mind, and I'll be knocking on your office, though.
Got it, sir.
Thank you, Mayor Rowe and the city council. You peoples have really been good for the city. I can say that. I see a lot of improvement. Lot of mom and pop shops is back. They're being filled back up again. They had left, but a lot of them is coming back. And I appreciate you putting that window right there by me there. I can ride right by there. I don't have to go too far. You know, I cook so I eat out. But anyway, what's wrong with this place tonight? It's dead. I had more fun in the funeral home than anything here tonight. Everybody look like they mad or something. What's going on with you? Come on, this is holiday, Christmas. Cheer. You peoples at home, sitting back looking? I said the same thing to you. Get out and do something and give something to somebody. Please, because there's a lot of peoples who are in need so. Because there's a lot of peoples who are in need, so join some and give back something. And I said before, I was going to give out those Christmas cards to the homeless. And I had a big gift in there. I had 20 of them. But when I got down there, man, it looked like it was 30. Y'all told me, well, but 17 peoples in this city homeless. That's not true. But anyway, they appreciate it. And Douglas Park's school principal, I want to say to her, "Thank you for what she do at that school." And she did write me a letter back and said, "Thank you, Mr. Toler, for what you do." This is the first time I ever got a "thank you" for what I do. But I'm not bragging, but it's nice to say "thank you" sometime. But when you don't say "thank you," the next year, I ain't going to give you nothing. I don't be fair with you. But anyway, everybody looking good. I hope to see you after the new year. You know, I'm 19 years old. You know, I'm still a cluckin'. But anyway, everybody have a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And Dr. Patton, thank you for all you doing for the city. I don't care what people say, but they see a lot of us come up here and we cry about everything, but we're not doing anything to say that they help. So what can you expect? We ain't doing anything to help. But anyway, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year to all of you. Good night.
Thank you, sir. The next speaker is Donna Si, ma'am. You have five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Donna Si, and I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood. Last night, there was a review of the comprehensive plan for the city. My question is, how is this comprehensive plan coordinating with the information in our budget plan for 2018? I would like the comprehensive planner to meet with me and show me how both are being coordinated or not. If not, why not? Thanks for your attention.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Sunshine Swinson. And ma'am, you have five minutes.
Hello. Good evening. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of city council, Dr. Patton, city attorney, Ms. Whitehead. I'm Sunshine Torre, owner of Fit Bar, 3280 Academy Avenue in the lovely Churchland area. Also, Fit Bar Express, 307 High Street, riding in beautiful Old Town neighborhood. I'm here to both introduce myself to some of you that do not know me and reintroduce myself to those that do and to answer any questions that you may have. It was brought to my attention some concerns regarding my new business venture. Not only do I have Fit Bar, I have Fit Bar Express, but I've just obtained my third business license in the city of Portsmouth within a venue space called The High on High Street. Just to give you my vision of what The High on High Street is, it's a members-only cigar lounge and rental facility. It's geared at the high-end clientele, focused on business professionals, young professionals, business owners, city council members, lawyers, doctors, those that are looking for an elite space to go relax and do basically, you know, things that you would do in a normal night spot. But I want it to be in Portsmouth. We are not, and I will not mention the venue, that we have been linked to, but that is not who we are. If anyone knows me, I am a business professional. I am not only someone who is very highly educated, I also have a deaf knowledge of city work. I've worked for the city of Portsmouth. I've worked for various city localities, and I'm very familiar with what to do and what not to do. And I want to reassure city council and city staff that I am not what you think is coming. I've worked very closely with city staff to ensure that what the facility is, is what the facility will be. I welcome you all and invite you all. And we'll host something very special so you can see what I have worked very hard, essentially putting all of my life savings in to ensure that we have something of quality. Where I've been coined the Town Point Club of Portsmouth. And that's what I'm trying to bring. And I invite you all to, if you have any questions or any comments, to contact me directly. I'm open. I would absolutely love to talk to all of you and answer any questions that you may have concerning The High on High Street and my business dealings with the city. I've been here, born and raised. I can open my businesses anywhere in the Hampton Roads area, but I purposely bring them to Portsmouth because I am a Portsmouth girl, born and raised. And I want nothing more than to have quality in my city. From my juice bar, most people will say, "You crazy. Why did you open up two in the city of Portsmouth?" But I wanted to bring access to a healthy, holistic approach to wellness and a different perspective. We're known for our ginger shots. We're known for the award-winning ginger lemonade. There's not any places you can get that from unless you're going to the Virginia Beach or you're going to Norfolk. Why can't we have that in Portsmouth? We do. And the same thing with this members-only venue. You have to go through an application process to any... To even gain access to the facility. To go through the process, you'll see, we'll send you the application. I can send it to staff so they can see it and you can review it. It's a very strenuous process that you have to go through to even get through the doors. Because I wanted to create a safe, high-end environment for professionals like myself and you all to come. Business meetings, like I said, similar to the Town Point Club in Norfolk. So again, thank you for staff for working with me, for getting this facility open. I am honored to have three business licenses in the city of Portsmouth and supporting the tax revenue here in Portsmouth. So again, if you have any questions, I am open, can meet with you all. And I look forward to seeing each and every one of you at the special open house for city council. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker and our last speaker is Pamela Wilkins. And ma'am, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members and staff. I'm coming, talking about the pending item with Dr... With the city attorney talked about getting the grass cut. And I did a little bit of research on CXX. And they are, you know, they appear to be a good company. They're, you know, community concerned. They're socially responsible. And I also looked on, he note, said something about preempting. That's dealing with, the cities can't regulate the railroad as far as their operations or how to operate. It has nothing to do with them cutting their grass. Because they are required to maintain the areas around their railroad tracks. And that's the issue that we had. They not cutting the grass. So my question, I know he said that they were going to send out notices and all that. Can we be updated next meeting or so, whether that has taken place and what the results are? Because the grass is steadily growing. And I look at it this way. We had two of our homeowners that are on our environmental committee. They were able to send them an email, although they had to send it twice. But they sent the email and they sent a picture of the property, and they came out and cut it. That was last year, though, in October. So they haven't been back since, and they have sent them another email. So I'm saying if these are regular homeowners, we're able to get them to cut it at first. Our city can't get them to cut it. So my question is, what's... Who can get these people to cut it? We're just asking them to maintain the property. We're not asking them to redirect their railroad tracks or anything, the operation of it. We're just asking them to maintain it. So I'm coming to you all. I mean, what should we do? You say, I understand you say we can't go on their property, you know, but you said you're going to send them a notice. When? Are you going to let us know what they responded? Did they respond to the letter or...? I just want to know what? You all looking at me like, I don't know.
Ma'am, we're here to listen. And once you come... I have three people who want to speak. So once you're finished, we'll... I'll recognize those folks.
Okay. So in other words, nothing you can do about it right now. Thank you.
I'm going to take the speakers in the order that they appear. The chair recognizes city attorney Ashby.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of city council. Let me first address the procedural issue, ma'am, and I appreciate you honoring that. Inasmuch as this is the agenda, non-agenda speaker portion, it is not designed typically to have an interchange. As it relates to Ms. Wilkins, I will certainly meet with her because I do want her email contact so that we can see if that will expedite the process with communication, both from inspections and myself. I will tell you, as I'm sure Ms. Wilkins is aware, one of the difficulties is, as it relates to the railroad, their real estate department division is often, I believe, CSX's is down in Jacksonville. Norfolk Southern's, I believe, is in Atlanta. So it's not simply going to someone even for Norfolk Southern, going over to Norfolk and getting a response. You have to kind of move through the chain. But we will certainly take any contact information she has and resend and send additional information in terms of notices and summons to those contacts that they have made in order to move this process along. And if Ms. Wilkins wants to follow up with my office or permits and inspections, we'll certainly make her aware of where we are, Mr. Smith and myself.
Thank you, sir. And I took that, that you'll meet with Mrs. Wilkins at the end of this meeting?
Certainly.
Okay, thank you. And Deputy City Manager Vince Jones is going over there now. Councilman Moody.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the city attorney letting Ms. Wilkins know what he had shared with us earlier. And I appreciate us trying to get her contacts, but I don't think his situation is all that difficult. The grass, and she showed us some pictures, grass was, probably would be over my head. So I don't think we should handle it any differently than we would for John Doe, a citizen of Portsmouth. I think we should send them a notice that certainly, that we would appreciate them, you know, cutting the grass, that we take pride in our city. And our code says that anything over 10 inches is in violation. So that's what I would suggest. I mean, this thing shouldn't be that difficult. And I'm sure CSX could point us in the right direction where we would have a local contact. I'm sure they don't want to have any bad PR with them contributing to the unsightliness of our city. So I would suggest that. I don't want to send Ms. Wilkins out to deal with CSX. I would think we should put the cloud of our city behind it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Woodaker.
Yes, this is for the city attorney. The CSX Corporation, is that federally or privately owned?
As it relates to CSX operations, when it comes to railroad operations, those are governed by federal law. What Ms. Wilkins may not appreciate, and which Mr. Smith and I have already discussed and with him moving forward with, in terms of sending out notices, while some property, let's talk about relatively speaking, along the railroad operation may have some issues, that is at best a gray area. Grass cutting, while we all understand that's normal city zoning function, the issue becomes, should we have city contractors on, along that right-of-way, cutting grass and a train coming, there's an issue. We have to be a little bit concerned about that. If it is a off-property issue, for instance, there's some CSX land that does not run alongside the railroad. There's probably less of an issue. But there are elements of the operation that are federally run and preempted. And then there are portions where the city can, in fact, exercise local zoning control.
But the land itself is privately owned?
Yes, it would be listed under CSX's property.
Right. And so that's my concern, that it's a privately-owned property and should be treated as any other privately-owned property. I understand the concern about the federal regulation, the railroad right-of-way. But I heard Ms. Wilkins mention at her, at the last meeting about some significant rodent issues and some problems in the community that that's causing. I don't think that they should be held captive to that over a federal regulation that may not even impact because it's privately owned. If we were to go out there and cut it, what would be the ramifications?
The issue would be trespassing under the federal regulations, not local, for entering that property without permission.
Okay, that's why I was asking. Well, we could... That's why I was asking, is it privately owned or federally owned?
It is privately owned by the railroad, but their entire operation is governed by federal law. So for instance, if it were an office building, that might not create the issue as opposed to being a operation related to railroad operations. Certainly, we could, if it was simply an office building set apart, we would have more latitude to deal with the grass and whatnot around an office building. To the extent it's adjacent to a railroad right-of-way, that's where it becomes a bit more of an issue. But please understand, when council, when Ms. Wilkins raised the issue last session and council raised the concern, Mr. Smith was in my office the next day. We had that discussion, and the process is going forward.
I recommend that, with the concurrence of my colleagues on council, that we ask for a briefing on this, either the first Monday or second Monday in January, to include the railroad's responsibility of the real estate that they own as it relates to property maintenance, our ability to enforce our police laws, and that's the little small P, our police power. And then second, other issues like blocking streets, sounding whistles at night. All those issues, I think, we need to have a briefing on. Do you all agree? Dr. Woodaker.
If we find out the grass can be cut before the briefing...
Yes, sir, ma'am, for that.
Right.
But I think that we need to have a general briefing from... Because I don't know about my colleagues on council, but we're getting complaints, or at least I am, about rail traffic on the Centerline Rail at night and blowing whistles. And I'm much... I'd like to know what is our ability to regulate any aspect of the railroads.
Mayor, we'll take the necessary measures to get ready and come back to you.
All right. Everybody in agreement? Good. Well, this brings us to the end of our agenda. This is our last council meeting for the year 2017. Our next council meeting will be in January. I want to, again, give our best wishes to Vice Mayor Cherry when he assumes office as city treasurer on the 1st of January. Sir will miss you. And to all the citizens in Portsmouth, I wish you, and I'm sure my colleagues, Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays, and the best wishes for the new year. This meeting is adjourned.